Good afternoon and welcome to the May 20th, 1:30 PM city council meeting. At this time, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance and prayer by Councilman Lawrence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we humbly approach the throne. Father and Lord, we also give thanks, Father, that this is the day that you have made, Father. We will rejoice and be glad in it, Father. Lord, we ask that there for special prayers for Mayor Focker, for Karen, Lord, and we ask that you just send the comforter to her father and to all his family. And Father, we just ask God that you just give this council wisdom and knowledge of how we should go. And Lord, that we would walk in your guidance and like I said, in your wisdom, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
At this time, do we have any questions or comments from any citizens? I see none. So we'll move on to number five, the city manager's monthly report. Mr. Spredling.
So as normal, we'll kind of start with a little financial overview. You've got the reports in your budget or in your packet, the budget report in your packet. So everything's still looking pretty good in the general fund. Revenue's still trending a little higher above budget expenditures are trending a little bit below our budget. So overall, we're still below our budgeted amount, which is pretty good. We're officially seven months through the budget year, so we're getting there towards the end. We've also been keeping an eye on that EMS revenue as we've been planning on what to do with that. It is still trending towards our amended budget amount, so we're still on track there. On the water and sewer side, without the transfer, remember, we do have a pretty big transfer coming out this year to help offset the swimming pool project. Without those transfers, revenue remains well over our expenditures and our expenditures are right on budget, so they're performing well. Sales tax in April was up point four two percent. That was after that 11% drop last month. So year to date, we're down about 2.35% from last year. So you know, with the economic changes and stuff like that, we're starting to kind of even out. We are still at our budget amount. If you recall, we budgeted sales tax flat. So we're still on pretty good shape, but budget wise on that. On the hotel occupancy tax, we actually saw a big pickup in April, so we had some more hotel stays coming in in April. We're back above the five-year average now and back above our budgeted amount. So that's kind of good to see as we get into the summer. That's is generally when the local industry starts having some projects, so that's not necessarily unexpected. Some project updates, Johnson Park Youth Center, the swimming pool has reached its substantial completion date. So we're just kind of doing the final touches on that. We do plan to have a ribbon cutting on our first opening day, which will be May Friday, May 30th. We expect that to be at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. So that will be our free admission day like we've done in the past, starting the season off with free admission. We've got a gym item, a little bit later, we'll talk about the fees for the upcoming season and that that we previously discussed. But everything's looking really, really nice out there. We'll just kind of reiterate that this project, you know, we had a pretty set budget for what we could do. The council didn't want to take out any debt for that, so we, you know, we're working within a project scope. You will see, it looks significantly different, but the vast majority of the money you don't see. It's in the all-new pump house and pump equipment, all the plumbing that is under the concrete, the new gutters around the pool. And so it's going to be a lot better. In all the years and everything we've done out there, we have never touched the plumbing. And so the plumbing dated back to the 50s. And so as everybody knows, when we made this decision, the decision wasn't to renovate or not to renovate. It was to have a public pool or not have a public pool. And so that's kind of why it got some priority up there because it was failing pretty big. So it's, it's pretty good. I think it'll take, it is different. It'll take a little bit of getting used to, but we've got a lot more flexibility. We do have lights in the pool now, so we'll be able to do things after dark, which I think will be cool and open up some things. And we are treating about half the, I think the old pool is about 180,000 gallons. This pool, since we, you know, took out the deep end, is about 130,000 gallons. So it gives us more flexibility and more space. We can use more square footage of the pool because you don't have that area where you were transitioning into the deep end. So it gives us a lot more flexibility. I think once people get out there and experience it, they'll understand with the, with the zero entry and the kiddie pool attached. I mean, it, the flow around the pool is much, much improved. It feels so much more open. I was really surprised with how different it feels. So just be prepared for that on the 30th. City Hall, we continued to progress here around at City Hall, the basement. Most of the work is going down the basement. We're finishing up floors on the upper level, so those should go in. They're going to put actual the vinyl down, I believe, this Saturday while, while we're closed. And then other than the bathrooms, that'll be everything on this front. We've got the new counter at utility billing. IT is working on getting the community computer switch back over there. There's now a little ledge so you can fill out your checks or write what you need to without holding it up on the glass. So that should be a lot better serviced. We're getting ready to move Linda back out into the front window so that people can be greeted. And we've started hanging a few things back on the wall. It has been a challenge to keep plumbing working as we're progressing through that. We are still having some leaks in the main plumbing line in the basement that, you know, it's getting replaced, but apparently not fast enough. And so we've kind of been going in phases and every time we think we've gotten ahead of it, another section of old cast iron pipe starts leaking. And then I have to look at Stella's concerned face as most of that pipe runs through the record storage room and all of the old records. And so I'm trying not to give Stella a heart attack before she can officially retire in a couple of years. But it is, there again, kind of in this building, I know like this room, you know, now that we're on TV in the new room. I mean, this is the most visible, but the vast majority of the work here is not seen too. That is the plumbing changes and the HVAC. Some of that plumbing is actually dated back to Woolsworth, so it's even earlier than the City Hall renovation in 1984. And so it, there again, I know sometimes we get a little flack for taking care of staff offices and stuff, but it is the staff that responds to citizens' needs and works for the citizens. We need to be able to go to the bathroom and, you know, feel comfortable in our workspaces. Right now, there is not a functioning men's toilet in the building. We have urinals, but we don't have a toilet right now because of that line, because we can't use our brand new ones that were supposed to be open because the cast iron line is getting replaced. Now, that's short-term fix, but just kind of, it's a, keeps things interesting. You never know what you're gonna get into when you come to work, but it is progressing pretty well. A couple of updates on the well 13, we are still just waiting for our permit back from the TCEQ for the, that's the redrill of the well that was sanded in. So we've got everything ready to go and put that out for bid once we get the permit back from the TECQ. We are still in the permitting process of the additional well on Northwest Wellfield 2, but that is still progressing. And again, at the wastewater treatment plant, we are still renting the pump because we have awarded that screw pump bid, but we're still waiting on the screw pumps. Two weeks ago, we were down to a 26-week lead time. So we're probably down to about 24 weeks. So we knew that there was going to be a little bit of a lead time on, on that, so we're still just waiting. Those screw pumps are custom-made from the time that you're ordered, so that's, that's not a piece that you can just keep in stock. You know, they're measured to the casing that they fit in and the height of every, you know, every sewer plant's different. So those are custom-made and just take a little bit of time, but we're working through that. Just some other news, at Yucca Estates, the housing development, so they poured the tie-in to the existing street. So that's about, just about finished. We should start seeing home construction pretty soon. So I know Plan Development has talked with them on the permits, so we expect some house plans coming in pretty quick. So the bulk of the work out there is now done, so that's exciting. We do have the plat in engineering for Fairlanes addition unit, what's going to be unit 13, which is the six-lot extension of Loma Linda. So that should be on the planning and developing, zoning agenda next month for approval of the plat for that. And then we'll work through incentives on that. As we go through our departments, of course, this is a busy time of the year for Michelle with all of our seasonal hires and working through some of the payroll fixes with our new software. It's getting a little better every payroll. The problem is unlike finance, when you work with finance every day, payroll happens once every two weeks. So you make a lot of progress and then you hope that you get it all fixed and then you don't know until you run the next payroll. And then you find a few new errors and you go through that, but we are working through that and that's definitely kept her busy. In finance, our finance team went to the Tyler Conference, which was in San Antonio this year. So it comes around Texas about every four years, so we do try to send them off. So Michelle actually went with the finance team on that training too, so they got some hands-on experience with the new software and learned some tricks while we're there. We also hosted the TML's financial boot camp at the Dome last month. Had about 77 attendees from all over the state. I was really surprised how far that they came. We had some people from Houston, Hutto. You know, we hosted it up here, trying to give our local smaller cities a place to come and get some of that training when they can't afford to go down to Austin or San Antonio, but it was really nice to see that. I mean, people come up for that. A lot of good feedback. TML was actually quite pleased both with the facility and the cost. Of course, we waived the cost for the facility and their total food for two days was about $2,300 for three, two meals a day and snacks. She said that would have been over $8,000 in Austin. So but they are looking, we're, we're going to probably look at least bi-annual or starting to schedule quarterly trainings at the Dome for TML financial training. So we're excited to get finance involved in that. They've also been working on the last little details for the tech spot payment on 10th Street. So we've gotten them all the details and we think that that should be processed soon. Once that payment is processed, then we can start the process to abandon the state spur. It is still on the state highway system. Once we complete it and we get their payment, then it'll go in front of the Transportation Commission, the Texas Transportation Commission to make that change. Once they make that change, then it will officially be ours and we can dictate what happens from that point.
Has all been taken care of?
Yes, the punch list. So of course, I know Terry, she's ready for that million dollars, so. And I know there's been some pushback and some, some, I know some people think are dragging their feet, but on a few things that we need to fix. But if, but we're still trying to do everything text thoughts way because I don't want to do anything to jeopardize that million dollar payment. So just kind of keep that in mind. Terry also kind of coordinated our summer intern program, and so we've actually have five summer interns working right now. So Anne Marie is back with Nicole at the Dome and Addison knows another A. They throw me with all these As. Addison, apparently we didn't scare her off last year, so she's back in the finance department. Emma is back working through the summer and IT, she has been part-time since her last, she's been working one day a week since last summer's intern. And now she's back for the summer. This will be her last summer with us. And then we have two new interns this year. Reed Huff is here doing some miscellaneous loading type projects and then so is Kayla, Kyla Holt. And so they're working with emergency services, fire OEM, doing some projects and stuff for their. We've got a lot of scanning and some things coming up and, and as their summer ends, we'll bring them all in front of you again to let them tell you a little bit about their experiences and what they've, they've learned. Always find that exciting. It's always a big eye-opener for them, I think, when they come and actually work for the city and, and see what we deal with and how things happen. So that's always good to get those interns in here, give them some practical experience and then get them to go educate the, the younger generation on what exactly is going on. So we're glad to take care of them. And then of course, finance team was also supported with the reality check event that was at the Dome. I know that Terry is always at the lifeline booth and
That was a blast.
I know they don't really like her because she makes them give up everything before she gives them their free little handout. But I think they like her better than they like her husband because the sheriff was around out giving tickets again. So, you know, they, they do learn about that. We'll talk about that a little later in public engagement. Emergency management, Keith and Sydney both completed their advanced ICS training. That's ICS 300 and 400. So that's good that they're working with that. Of course, Pender had a big, big part of the health and safety fair that was this last weekend. So they had a lot of good vendors and stuff out there. I think attendance was down just a little bit this year. I don't know why. There's lots of good information, good booth out there, but they did get some, some involved. We've also started our FCC licensing renewal, so that's always kind of a process. I don't think it's a problem, but anytime you, you deal with the federal government, you know, there's always a process to it. We're also starting to put some, working on our hazard mitigation plan for some, we, we're about to have access to another hazard mitigation grant from the fire that happened earlier this year. So we're putting some stuff together with that. I think we're going to work on backup generation of some of our critical utility infrastructure. Mainly looking at the wastewater plant and a few key lift stations. So if we ever lose power, you ever, everybody worries about water. Water isn't really the problem. You know, we, we elevate a whole lot of water, but if you lose power and you can't treat the sewage, people are still using the water and flushing things, and so that is kind of what we're looking at. I know people might think that's a little counterintuitive, but we can get bottled water and we can do a lot of things to address water shortages. We already elevate about nine million gallons of water. Our average usage for domestic water is about a million and a half. So I mean, if we shut off industry, we have like seven days of elevated water. But sewer, the plant has about a million gallon extra capacity before it starts overflowing. We, in normal use, put in about a million gallons a day, so you have like a day. And spilling sewage is an issue, so, but so that's kind of going to be our program for that. The, the two grants that are still outstanding, they've made it to, they've made it to step six out of nine is the fire detection system from the previous hazard mitigation grant. And then the stormwater project, the 3rd Street stormwater project has made it to step six too. So we're hopeful that we can get some money there at off-center cost on those projects. They've also been coordinating with the state at the airport for the fire airbase that we're still working on. That is pretty much being green lighted by the state. The utility department is installing some water line. We'll talk about that out there, but, but that's looking really good. We also hosted a damage assessment training at the Dome and had a pretty good regional turnout from that. We're working on a donations management class for the, for the area in September. And then we also had AgriLife fire mitigation drones up here. They were doing some test aerial testing on some of our mitigation areas. They're working on how their software can determine fuel loads from aerial pictures and stuff like that. And so since we've got some burn areas, you know, they can, they can take the aerials of the areas we haven't burned versus the areas that we have burned and help fine-tune their software so that they can get better hazard threat assessment. We are going to be featured in the AgriLife magazine for our mitigation efforts. So that's coming out. I've seen a draft of the article. It's really good. Once we get it finalized, they're, they shared me a link that I can view it, but I can't download and share it yet, so since it's not approved. But once we get that, once we get that approved, I'll send that out and of course, we'll put that out on all of our social media and stuff too. At the, in the utility department, of course, they laid 3,000 feet of six-inch to the airport and four hydrants. This has also given us a chance to give a secondary feed to that area. That area's really just had one feed, which is kind of funny because Chris was talking about that, when the county road and bridge fills up their water trunk, trucks from the overhead fill station at the south end of the airport, they have to tell the airport because when that happens, they can't flush their toilets because there's not enough pressure, so they have to close their toilets while the county road and bridge is filling up their water truck. So this will also take care of some of that, so. But there is just a four-inch line servicing the airport now and it's dead-ended. So when we get all this done, it'll be linked in on two sides so that they won't have that problem anymore. In addition to supporting the well, also replaced a motor out at one of the wells. And in our monthly updates now, one of Chris's favorite updates is sewers running downhill. And if you recall, that's important because there for, you know, about 18 months, we had all those collapsed lines and it wasn't running and they were having to vacuum and, and do it. So we're back again, still staying ahead of all of that stuff, so all of our sewer is running the way that it's supposed to. In the fire department, Archie, he's completed his type-three IC training, so he's now certified as a type-three incident commander for responses. So that'll probably make him a little more in demand, send him out, make a little more money going with that. Fire department also worked on a joint training with Randall County for low-angle canyon rescue. Kind of joking with Mike about that earlier. It is kind of funny because, you know, really in my time about that, we do quite a bit of that just because of our terrain. And I think I've used the ladder more at a negative incline than I ever did at a positive incline at the police department. So that's some, some good training. I know that some people might think that that's funny, but most of the panhandle's flat. We're not flat and we do have a lot of those canyon areas, so that's definitely some good, good training. In addition to that, the fire department taught the park and rec employees CPR and first aid. You know, we approved our standards of care at a previous council meeting. That is part of that standard. They all get certified through CPR and first aid for our park rec and our lifeguards. Fire department took care of that. They have started hydrant flushes, so I'll just remind you, you know, depending on where you're at, you know, you might experience water discoloration when they do that. That's just sediment that, a fire hydrant flows at a significantly higher rate than your average faucet. So when they open that, it shakes stuff loose. It is normal. It is safe. It's sediment that is naturally in the water that just settles out. It's been treated and it's so, I mean, it's not harmful. It's just dirty.
Do they notify the areas before they do that?
Yes.
While you just unscrew your filters, I mean, your screens on your things?
Yeah, let the water run a little bit and it will, it will subdue. We do try to do notifications through Facebook and other methods. I mean, there again, we try the best that we can. We cannot physically make contact with every house and wait until we have physically checked off every house. But they are working through that. And then of course, the fire department supported Baby Animal Day, the Frank Phillips College Job Fair, the Touch a Truck at the church up here, Reality Check, and a lot of our community events. In Public Works, they were at the Touch a Truck event too, because they're not the only, you know, fire is not the only one with big fancy trucks. They also helped set up for the eighth grade formal. We do have all the splash pads. The two splash pads are working again now, so we're back in that season. We are going to try to stay on top of that. We had one little equipment failure, but I think last year we've hopefully got things working.
When we have out of town, like Perriton was here at Hubel Park today, do we give advance notice that they're going to be at Hubel Park? Because I think it was about five buses from Perriton.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
They don't contact, okay.
It depends on what they need. In the past, I think if they want to set things up, they normally do, and we do have some requirements with that.
Okay.
That's pretty common in the summer, you know, this, that's, I guess they like the things we have at that park. And it's, there's normally at least three or four schools from the area that drive over to just spend an afternoon at the park. And of course, this year with the new play equipment and some of the things we've done, it's definitely improved. The bird sanctuary has now been completely removed and the dirt's all leveled as we get into phase two of our planning for the, the replacement. The, the survey winner was the pollination garden slash zen reading rest area, so.
I thought it was Polynesian.
Well, I'll put some bamboo out there and we'll have a grass skirt policy on the first Sunday of the summer. But so we're working through that. That'll be pretty good. It'll probably raise flower beds and some nice seating in some areas just to, you know, like I said, to me, I call it a zen garden because it's just kind of a place to go and relax. Of course, you've got all the flowers so that the bees can pollinate and well, we're working through the scope and all of that, you know, like everything, you know, for some reason, this, the council doesn't like me to spend money without it being planned and approved. So, you know, I know some people think that's not the case, but that is the case, and so we're working through that. We are still working through lighting issues at the sports fields. I mean, it's, they're in process. We've got parts ordered and things are coming. The, the wind's just been really hard the last little bit. And I will just kind of remind everybody, and we've talked to the council about that, but in the early budget process, there is a, some money for an assessment, to assess those all the fields next year and get a capital plan together, see how we want to move forward with that as part of our next capital issuance project. And then of course, they've been working hard at the swimming pool, getting ready for the summer season. There again, remember Friday, May 30th is the first day for the swimming pool to be open. It will be free admission and starting at two. For the police department, believe it or not, animal control's second new animal control truck has been delivered.
Oh, thank you.
Slightly, slightly ahead of what they had originally warned us about. But two years after we ordered it, they're about, so they're pretty well caught up, so I know that they're excited about that. They were also out at the health and safety fair and did six low-cost microchips at the safety fair, so we've got six more animals registered. At the police department, they of course were involved at the health and safety fair as well. They had the, both the motorcycle team out there and some other and doing the kid grant, did a few kid grants. Captain Sims was off at the Motorola conference, learning about the CAD system and all of their cameras and all that type of stuff. They were also out at the Baby Animal Day and the Frank Phillips College Career Fair as well. We also hosted an interview and interrogation class taught by the Texas Rangers and had some regional people attending that. So there again, we are trying to kind of be a regional training hub for a lot of our different professions and services, so that's good. We actually have a big utility class coming up in a week or two at the Dome. Actually, the, the books are coming in. So we have definitely become a pretty good regional site for, for training. Of course, that helps us because we need it and it helps also a lot of the smaller cities again, because they don't have to travel as far to get some of that training that they need. And the fire, police and sheriff's office also went out and helped put the crosses at West Lawn on the veterans' graves in preparation for Memorial Day. In the city secretary's office and court, Michelle and Evelyn both passed a portion of their court clerk two certification tests. So they're getting closer to being court clerk, certified court, certified court clerks two. They are both already certified clerk one, so that's just the next step. We also had a trainer come in last week to set up and do some Laserfish training. And we've been doing much better with Laserfish. Laserfish is our digital document management solution. So as we start getting, getting things scanned in, we actually have a government contract. We'll be able to put some of that stuff out on our website to be publicly accessible through the Laserfish portal, so like our invoices and a lot of things that we get a lot of common requests for, we can just put out there and say, hey, there it is. You can go find what you need and print off what you need. So we are slowly trying to work through that. The first step was to get everything, starting to get scanned back in. But that's a lot of the work of at least what one of the interns is going to be doing, if not probably a lot of them in some way or the other. And of course, we did, Stella did complete the election and we've got all that wrapped up for this year. I know that it's always a big relief for her when we get to the end of that season. It's easy for me because like I, I joke all the time, I stay way out of that. My job is to work with whoever the citizens so choose to put up here, so I try to stay as far away from that as possible. Sometimes I think it's maybe hard on new candidates because I like ignore them like the plague during the election and then now all of a sudden we need to work with them, but Stella does a really great job keeping the candidates informed and giving them information that, that we need. It does look right now, the bill that would have moved municipal elections to November has not made it out of committee. So I think we might be staying the same for a little bit. But with city secretary and court, they did pass a law that requires public notices to be posted 72 hours, 72 business hours in advance now. It was just 72 hours. So just a fair warning after September, or we might probably start doing that earlier, is for a Tuesday council meeting, we will have to publish and send everything out on Thursday now. Thursday now. So it's going to shorten our window a little bit to get stuff ready and to get things out, give y'all another day to look it over, which may or may not be good. For the most part, I'm kind of neutral about it. If I've got it done on Friday, then I'm less stressed on a, if I got it done on Thursday, then I'm less stressed and stuff's less stressed on a Friday. So I'm not for sure what that really matters, business days versus full days. The other thing we're going to have to work through and see what the state gives us guidance on as part of that bill is we now have to post a physical copy of our budget. And so I don't exactly know, I mean, our budget's a hundred and 80 page document. I don't know how you post 180 pages.
Every.
That's, I'm assuming that they're going to do it, something like the school district does, the school districts, the T E A has a, has a spreadsheet that's their required information that has to be available to the public. And it's a very high level summary. It's like revenue and then expense categories, like how much for instruction, how much for transportation, how much for facilities. And so if we do that, we can probably get the budget condensed to maybe three pages, depending on what funds they want included. But that's something we'll be working through with this budget cycle. So if you start seeing some, some different charts or some different things, that's probably why, just kind of keep up with that. In civic downtown civic Nicole's things, of course, they've had a pretty busy April. They did the mom's boozy brunch, mother's day set up at the dome. That was actually really successful. They had a lot of people come, the local vendors that were there all together did over $6,000 in sales from that event. So it's always nice to, you know, we do try to find ways to, you know, help and include local, local businesses. I mean, we can't feed everything, but that's definitely supporting those that wanted to, wanted to come. She also helped with Deidra, but I'm going to, I'm going to save some of Deidra's stuff for Deidra's thing and she won't be here to make stumble over the words. So we'll, we'll see. But we are getting ready for a lot of our summer events. You know, be sure we've got the second Saturday car cruise with music on main every second sun, Saturday in the summer. We've got the fourth on main event coming up, just lots of things. If you haven't, we'll talk about the visit burger website in the next session too. If you haven't, there's, make sure you're looking at Facebook, social media, visitburger.com, your, the boomtown beat that's going out, that just went out and your water bills has got the summer event schedule on them. So we're putting that stuff out there in multiple ways. So just make sure you're paying attention to all of that. At the dome, McKenzie, she finished and graduated with her bachelor's in strategic communication. So a big round of applause for McKenzie putting through that. And they've already got Dan Marie busy and working. And then of course, the safety fair was there. We continue to put together our information for Main Street and data, and we're working on our strategic plan as we work towards getting to that Main Street designation. That group is working on educational materials for a possible liquor option election. Part of that feedback, you know, we, the community's talked about that for a year. You know, the city can't sponsor that and the council can't do it. But right now you can have liquor by the drink in this county, but to do it, you have to have a private club, which means the business has to buy it at retail. So when we have chain restaurants and other things looking in, a lot of times they look at that and that can be a barrier to their profit margin. So that's been some of the feedback that we're trying to assist with some education and, and guide the community on that. We have 14 bands signed up for the battle of bands right now for Oktoberfest coming up. And we, we've made an offer for our celebrity judge. So I'll just leave it at that. And so as we get through that. Now in community engagement, we completed our Fairlands two cleanup. That was the biggest one so far, 4,880 pounds of bulk waste was turned in and allowed us to dispose of it. So that's definitely always better than just people throwing it out. Don't forget that code enforcement's also been busy with the, with the grass and stuff. We've seen an uptick in our yard kits. And so just remember, we do have that. We've got the bulk waste trailers. We've got lots of ways to partner with our community to do that. I just, I can't reiterate enough. It's not, it's not, the city can't afford, and it's not our job to do everything. It is our job to partner with you to try to handle things the best that we can. And so we do have four different ways to partner with you, whether it's a neighborhood cleanup, whether it's the self-help bulk refuse trailer, we'll set it, you fill it up, we empty it. Whether it's the equipment we'll give you, if you don't have the mower, you don't have the weed eater, we've got one we'll loan you, you know? So that's a, we're seeing a lot of uptick. I think they're getting used to having that. So hopefully we will have more of that. Our summer hands for code enforcement have started as well. You're going to start seeing them in some of our, even as we've slowly branded out, been rolling out some newer branded uniforms. So you know, most of our work guys are wearing the blue reflective, blue and black reflective stuff with our logo on the back of it. We also have some logoed reflective vests now. Part of that is like I was talking with the code enforcement crew is I want to make sure that they know it's the city doing this work, you know? And, and I think people see them a lot more, but they don't always know it's the city. So I want them branded to see what all we do. And so remember the textile only mows right of ways twice a year. We mow them once a month because the community wants that and we need it because oh my God, if we, if we let those grow, they mow at the beginning of the season, at the end of the season, which means if we let them go by the end of the season. And then of course, the parks department is the one that's been handling the clover leaf. So I don't want to leave them out, but they do a really good job of maintaining that clover leaf. Last couple of years, it's, you know, looked really good since we haven't.
If I get some community service individuals and we start to limb up those trees, do I have to go talk to the highway department? I, I mean, I just want to know because I might just go down and do.
We can, depending on where you're working, we've got, we've got some, some guidance. They know we work out there. If it's a city vehicle and if we get a city vehicle out there flashing lights and get you in some city vessels, some supervision, we can probably take care of that.
I just want to make sure.
And for the most part, all we need to do, I think all they've really asked is that we notify them. And so it won't be that hard. Then we had our Easter dog potty. I don't want to disappoint Deidra not saying it. And then also the pause for consent event, which was a pretty good, I'm supposed to say that Jolene, the terrier became the unofficial pup cup taste tester. So I'm not for sure who, 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 who Jolene the terror became to, but apparently she stole the show. She had five pup cups of her own and tested everyone else's. So she ended up with 12 total. And the crisis center was a great partner with, and we look forward to additional events with them. So that went really well. Of course, we had the reality check again, which was really good. Class of 2025 had 190 students and we had 30 plus booths this year. It went a lot smoother, you know, we definitely learned some things from the last year and it's, it's really interesting seeing the kids realize how expensive things are and how life really works, you know, when it's them having to pick everything.
They came to our booth for hair and it was hilarious how the husbands didn't want to pay for the, because they'd have to pay for the whole family. Kids haircut, so often they're like, I pay for their haircuts. I'm like, oh, yes you are.
Well, and this year they didn't have a choice on their family.
No.
So it was randomly picked and they didn't have a choice on their job, which was randomly last year. So your, your job and your family were randomly assigned. And so it definitely, I think was a good reality check. I know, again, I think the students and the vendors all, we always get positive feedback from that event on, on both sides and everybody's always excited to come help with that. So if you haven't noticed, we've started our dumpster art for 2025. Those applications are out. If anybody's interested in submitting a proposal for art to be painted on the dumpster, there's some of those in the lobby on that table right out there, or they can come in and talk to Deidra. We've also started advertising for other upcoming events, the youth honor printer day. That's the replacement for lemonade day. So we've kind of taken that in-house and not using the registered, so we can be a little more flexible on some of the things that we want to do. We already talked about the second Saturday. I do want to kind of throw this up here real quick because Deidra's done a lot of work on the visit burger website. If you didn't know, this was out there, it is out there. Visitburger.com. It's got all the events, things to do, where to shop, places to eat, places to stay, your event calendar's all on here. This is the same information you get if you download the Burger app. So if you go to the app and search Burger Texas, you can download all of this, but it is all out there in a lot of different ways. So I know that one of the comments on Facebook to something earlier was that, and it was some weird off like fourth party magazine that did some survey named us one of the most boring towns in the country. And Deidra did a pretty good responding to that, that, you know, in a, in a given year, we, the city alone sponsors 30 events. So you know, if you're bored or you're not doing anything, it's because, because you're not wanting to participate. But that, that is out there. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there for everybody to see.
Was it the neighboring city to the east of us?
Yeah, I do not believe so. But we're also then continuing to work with our ribbon cutting, the centennial committee as we get ready for our centennial and then our burger main street. But that's what happened in April. I'll entertain any other questions that you might have.
No, that's good. Always a lot of questions. Thank you. All right. So we will move on to number six, citizen presentation discussion with Jack Mustard regarding animal shelter intake euthanasia rates and animals at large. Mr. Mustard, come on up.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, council. My name is Jack Mustard. I stand before you today, not as, not only as a lifelong resident of this city, but someone who believes that how we treat our most vulnerable, including our animals, defines who we are as a community. First of all, I'd like to sincerely thank Coach Loftus for his decades of commitment to Borgers youth. Coach Loftus changed my life growing up and I'm one of the thousands touched by his guidance. Thank you, coach. Your legacy is part of the very soul of this town. Also want to recognize Borger Animal Advocacy Group, Sharon Prague and your incredible team, your dedication and fight to move animals from shelters daily matters. You're not alone. I'm here to help you and thank you. Also to the Borger Animal Control Officers, including Mr. Daryl, I've heard from countless citizens about the excellent job you're doing under tough conditions. And I want to, want you to know that we see you, respect you and are grateful. You're not only helping animals, you're helping build a better Borger. I hope that what I share today encourages and supports your mission while strengthening the already growing connection with the department and the council. No mistake about it, we are in a crisis. Each year thousands of dogs and cats are abandoned, neglected and surrendered, often through no fault of their own. Tragically many are euthanized simply due to the lack of space, funding and support. Research shows over 80,000 dogs are euthanized each month in the United States with the highest rates in the South, including Texas. In the past three months, I personally paid for the adoption fees of over 30 animals in the Texas panhandle that would otherwise have been euthanized. I don't share this for praise. I share this to show you that I'm invested. To each and every council member, I'm not asking you to carry the weight alone. I'm saying let's lead together. I've worked with advocate groups in Amarillo, Tulia and right here in Borger. The reality is clear, the number of good homes simply can't keep up with the number of animals entering the shelter. There's just no way, there's no comparison. We can't just keep mopping the floor. We have to turn off the faucet. Consider Tulia, where a 14 day euthanization policy sparked national backlash. Tulia is now known across the country as the Texas kill shelter town. They may have saved a few dollars short-term, but the long-term damage to their reputation was far more costly. Borger can and should choose a better path always. I want to talk a little bit about what I've called mustard's law or mustard's principles. Can I approach and give you all a handout?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm good. Eric.
These laws are practical, compassionate and effective. The first component of this is a mandatory and low cost spay and neuter program. Pet overpopulation is the root of the crisis. And I've seen this, it's not just Borger, it's, it's everywhere. It's just overpopulation. We must invest in prevention. And I encourage the, the council to think outside the box. I don't have all the answers. I don't come here to even project that I do. The, one of the things that we've talked about in several towns is the dollar solution on, on water bills, for example. If you were to add just $1 a month to the water bill, that could generate 25 to $30,000 a month to fund and spay, spay and neuter. That's real change from a small community investment. Number two, enforceable microchipping requirements. And I've talked a lot with Sharon about, you know, enforcing microchipping and how that would work in the communities, but that's something that will pay huge dividends long term. It may not show up quickly, but when you start the process of, you know, mandatory microchipping, it can make a huge difference long-term for the animals. Microchipping is inexpensive, effective and proven to reunite cats with families. Every animal adopted or reclaimed from shelters should be microchipped and registered with the city. And this should be enforced as much as possible. This isn't invasive, it's not invasive. It's protect, protective and it promotes community responsibility. Enforcement is the key. We must follow through to see the results with a microchip. Stronger enforcement of animal cruelty and abandonment laws. Abandonment or mistreating an animal is not just wrong, it's illegal. Current laws allow for up to one year in jail and $4,000 fine for these acts. We don't need new laws. We need to enforce the ones that we have. That's the great news about this process. We don't need to make new laws. All we have to do is enforce the laws on Texas books. Use public education fines and even court ordered community services to hold people who are accountable. Partnerships with local veterinarians. I recently had a dog that I rescued from the Tulia pound spayed here in Borger. And it was, it was a little over $300. And when we paid for it, I was like, man, that's, you know, quite a bit of money for, for the process. And we, we looked it up and even it called several other towns, including Amarillo, which it was actually lower to get your dog spayed here in Borger than it was in many of the, the vets in Amarillo. So Borger, as far as the, the amount, the cost to spay a dog, say a terrier or a larger dog, it's, it's, you know, it's within the normal variance of what, what other cities are, or even a little bit lower. But to spay and neuter an animal, say you get a, a dog out of the pound, to spay and neuter the dog is 300 to $400. So I think partnership, you know, partnerships with a local vet that has the same, you know, goals in mind would absolutely be amazing. You know, many vets want to help. Let's form a partnership, maybe for subsidized care, public outreach and support programs that make human solutions more accessible. And I would just, you know, encourage the council to investigate more, you know, with the local vets or how that would work, but that would be something that would be huge. You know, maybe some form of subsidized care for these, for these animals. And number five, create a community animal task force. Bring together advocates like Sharon. Y'all have so many people in this town that, that love animals. And I know you guys do too, Daryl back there. You know, everybody's trying to make a difference and I see that on social media. I mean, you can see it, you know, people want to make a difference, but a lot of people say, I just don't know how. I don't know where to go. But some form of community task force, you know, related to animals. Number one, it shows to the people that are wanting to come in to the Borger that the community cares. That's one of the main things that I think gets overlooked a lot of times with animal laws. Yeah, we want to protect the animals, but just the amount of love and karma and good energy when people see that, you know, this is a town that takes care of their animals is, it's huge. You know, as I mentioned Tulia in contrast, all you have to do is hashtag Tulia Texas on social media and see the damage that was done. This isn't about new ordinances, it's about empathy, responsibility and a kind, and the kind of city that we want to have and want to be. Dogs love without condition. They give us joy, loyalty, purpose and commitment. The very least we can do is to continue to return that love with dignity and increased protection. Let Borger be known as the city that leads. And once again, I encourage each and every one of you to think outside the boxes relates to how this specifically relates to Borger itself. Let Borger be known as the city that leads. And once again, I encourage each and every one of you to think outside the boxes relates to how this specifically relates to Borger itself. I don't claim to have all the answers, but I do think that collectively, people in the town and advocates and the council and the shelter, between everyone, there could be some amazing things happen. And I think Borger could be a leader in the Panhandle for that. On one of the pages that I gave y'all, you can see that Amarillo is now doing free microchipping. And I know, Garrett, you had mentioned something about that too. That's a cheap, and it's not the only thing that we need to do, but that is one inexpensive way to really make a difference and to show the community that we care. Let's give our animals in the shelter a voice and a chance. I'm asking not for perfection. I'm asking simply for progress. Let's lead, let's care, and let's be the city that others look up to. Thank you for your time and your attention, and most of all, your heart. Sharon has my number. Coach Loftus has my number. I'm always willing to talk. Like I said, if I don't have the answer, I'll go find the answer. And it's just an honor to be here, and I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much.
What I'd like to do is get you a... I'm on the Amber Fund Committee, which is a fund through the Amarillo Area Foundation.
Okay.
So there was a lady in Gray County that had left a lot of money solely for the use of animal care in Gray County and the counties adjacent to Gray County. Right now, most of their money goes to PAWS in Tampa, but they have a hard time getting other organizations to submit applications. We do need a nonprofit organization to do that, but that could fund low-cost spay and neuter, or free spay and neuter, or the low-cost or free microchipping.
Okay.
So I might just, I can get... The government can't apply for that money. We need that nonprofit or...
A 501 or something like that. Okay.
And so we can help connect with that, and that might be a way to get us some money to check off a couple of those.
Anything. That would be a good start. And once again, that would help get the ball rolling and...
Yeah, because right now, it's paying for programs with Pampas Meals on Wheels to provide food to the elderly so that they can keep their animals who would otherwise normally not be able to feed them.
Okay.
They'd help buy Texas Tech a van for a mobile outreach clinic. The veterinary program in Amarillo is on that committee as well, so we're trying to kind of work ways with them. I think that as, you know, I know that's on those, they just now graduated their first class of vets. I'm hoping that now that they're kind of getting their legs firm, that we can have a lot of new ways to partner with them, with their students and stuff to help.
Well, I would love to be a part of that. Would you be willing to give that information to Coach Loftus? And he can get that?
Yeah, I'll get you. I've got Sharon's information somewhere too. We'll get it to you one way or the other.
That'd be a blessing.
There are avenues that we're already kind of working with. That nonprofit sometimes has been... Because we tend to be a little... We've got a lot of volunteers, but we're a little more on the unofficial side of things that can kind of prohibit some of that. So if we've got a way to get some official, we can fund some money.
Any way we can connect the dots would be a blessing. And like I said, I think it takes collectively profits, nonprofits, city, non-city, all of everybody working together. And so I'd love to be a part of that in any way. And I have to get to work. Is that okay that I'm released?
Well, you go, Roddick. I'm sorry. We just want to say thank you for bringing this, and we definitely are going to take this into consideration. We appreciate the time. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Anybody have anything else that they'd like to say? Are we good? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. It was nice to meet you. Ms. Sharon? I believe that's perfectly fine.
I moved from Borger nine years ago, but I've been the admin for the Borger almost 11. I don't have a nonprofit. I don't care to build one either. But I am on some non... I will look into that.
Yeah, and like I said, as long as the money, it can flow through whoever.
Yeah, so I've got an idea. So I will get back to that. Yeah, because I'm not interested. I haven't been interested. I've been on a lot of boards.
No, it's a...
It's a lot. Yeah, I mean, it's like a full-time job, you know?
That wasn't me trying to suggest that you...
No, no, no. I'm just saying, I have thought about it, but then it's like, I have left a lot of boards to do. I have a lot to do personally. But I just want to reiterate what Jack was talking about with the mandatory microchipping and city licensure. Cities across the United, across Texas are doing this already. We're behind. We're way behind on the licensure. Even Fritsch has an ordinance that they don't enforce, but it's been on their books for years. Tullia, White Deer, White Deer does enforce. They have very low stray numbers in White Deer. They're smaller, but you won't see that many animals at their animal. So in 2025, tags can fall off, collars can come off. Microchip forever. That is a permanent identification. It's legal identification if your pet is stolen or lost. The police will get involved when there's a microchip involved. If there's not a microchip, it's a civil thing. So it helps in those ways. Dogs have been hit or mauled by other loose dogs without microchips. Decisions are having to be made by the city, by animal control. If we cannot locate the owner faster, whether they euthanize, because bedding is not an option with city monies. I don't have the money to vet other people's animals that are mauled, hit by cars. We can find the owners faster with the microchip. It does force responsibility back on the citizens, as Garrett spoke about trash and stuff. We've got to get something that helps animal control lower the intake, lower the stays of the intake that y'all are paying money for to deworm and feed and clean and the time it takes to clean the shelter. That would be with the city licensure and mandatory microchips. So I would really, really like that before the end of March. You know, something to help y'all and help animal control. Because they do a fantastic job. I have no complaint whatsoever. They do things legally. They care about the animals. They work. I've been working with them. If they were difficult, I would want. So why I'm not in Tullia anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon.
That was one of the reasons. But I would like to see the registration and microchip being mandatory. That might cost y'all a little bit of money. We might have to bring the fees down from 35 to 20, like we did on Friday. You know, maybe offer some free ones. I've done some free ones.
Microchipping is a minor cost in the scope of a lot of things that we can do. That's...
I think, yeah, because you can get microchipped for under $10. I can probably get you microchipped free. And that's what we did in Tullia. You know, we bought our first set, and then for every microchip we used, we got a free one from FI Nano.
Because I do think, just from an operational standpoint, that's the mandatory microchipping to me has to come with free microchipping.
It counted up. It counted up.
And I'm not saying good or bad. I think to get it, that's the...
Yeah, because they're going to... Yeah, I get that. But you would also tie the licensure and registration in with your rabies too. So because we do not see that many numbers coming into the shelter that have current rabies. It's astounding because the rabies vaccine is not for the dog. It's for the humans that they live with. That is a 100% fatal disease that is state-mandated every three years. So we could like, it's going to force people to be more responsible. It is. You know, which that is what laws do, running a stop sign, beating, you know, all of that stuff. That's why our law is to change behavior. So I really think eventually that the state's going to mandate the microchips and the registrations because that's the direction the state, you know, the cities in the state of Texas is going right now. There is a lot of cities that already have this in place. Amarillo is taking it before their city council next month. You know, I'm shocked that they haven't already done so. But they've got a board now that is going to be pushing it through. So I would like to see us do that. We are bougie here. We really are. Like when you compare yourself to other shelters in the area, you know, we're pretty fancy. We're doing some stuff that they're not doing, you know, already on this, but we've got to have some help. Yeah, we're at a standpoint economically, rescue-wise, rescues are closing across the United States. Texas isn't even the highest in euthanasia rate anymore. You know, we were surpassed by California, Washington, and New Mexico. We've got a United States problem, you know, but all I can help is right here in this city, you know, as Borger. And I pulled out of every other city in the Panhandle. I'm only focused on y'all. That's it. You know, that's where it is, and you know, that's where I'm back square one almost 12 years ago. You know, almost like brand new, you know? But I just, I've never come to the city council before in the last 12...
We're glad you did. We're glad you came with him.
I've never asked for anything from the city. I've done everything, you know, on my own without volunteers, donors, hustling, and rescues from across the United States. Today, I would really like to see the licensure, registration, and the mandatory microchipping to help us control some of the intake numbers at the shelter. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming in.
And I'm also going to skip off my...
Well, thank you for coming, and we appreciate you, girl. We thank you for what you do. Yeah, there you go. Well, y'all guys have a good day. All right, anything else? Are we good? All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, seven through 10. Are there any discussions on these? I believe we've...
I would just say, I did make a minor boo-boo. I forgot the budget second reading last meeting to put it on the agenda, so I carried it over. And then I forgot to change the title when I copied it. The motion is correct in your agenda memo? It's just not right on the wording, isn't right on the agenda. Of course, that's not, you know, I could have been just simple and just put budget amendment. But it is what we talked about, and nothing has changed since we read it the first time. I just focusing on the election items last month, somehow I just skipped, missed it, so it's on this month.
Is there anything? Consent agenda that you want to go over?
Nope.
Are we good? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda's number seven through 10 as written.
Okay, I'll second that.
Yeah, no, the agenda is correct. There's nothing that needs to be... The ordinance is correct. Excuse me.
Okay, I get you.
So all in favor? All right, it passes. There is for a look there, Garrett. All right, number 11 items to be considered. Consider and take appropriate action to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Borger and Hutchinson County Hutchinson County for jail services.
I've been working with the new sheriff to kind of finalize this. I had, this process has kind of started with the previous sheriff. I had required, they had wanted to update a few things, mainly the price. The first draft I got back there in the previous administration was lacking a few things that I felt we needed. So now we've worked through all of that. It's got the legal language that is necessary. Really, the only thing that's changing is the daily rate, which it needs, I think that's fair. We haven't used, this is just, you know, if we ever have to incarcerate a Class C, if the judge feels that somebody with warrants or somebody on a municipal charge needs to sit out their time, this just gives her the flexibility. We have actually not had anybody in the county jail on city charges for quite a while. But Judge Ford has asked to retain the ability to have that option should somebody need it. So other than that, like I said, it's pretty much mirrors the previous contracts we've had. The biggest change is just that daily rate going up.
From $35 to $50.
Yeah. And like I said, it was $35 a day when I started at the PD in 2010.
Okay.
So it definitely is fair to go up. We do have a line item in the municipal courts budget for that, if it is ever used. I think it's $5,000. We haven't used it in the last three years. So, but it is nice to have the option.
Okay. Anybody got anything?
No.
I'll entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the jail service agreement between the City of Borger and Hutchinson County and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. I'll second.
All in favor? It passes. Item 12, consider and take appropriate action to approve Resolution R-007-25, adopting a policy establishing guidelines and procedures for the display of banners on city-owned streetlight poles. Mr. Spradling?
So we talked about this a couple of months ago in our work session. Since we've added the decorative lighting down 10th Street, and we've got the poles at the dome, and some now on Main Street, we've had just a few informal inquiries about using it. And we've even had some internal ideas. I know public engagement talked about, you know, using them to display seniors' pictures. I know Stenett, actually, I believe, did that on their highway this year. So there are just some things, some possibilities have come up with that. And so we've decided that if we were going to have that, we needed to have a policy and procedure for who could do it, you know, and what that looked like. And that's what this resolution does, is set out those. So it would limit eligibility to nonprofit or community-based organizations. We have to pre-approve the banner that they want to put. There is a typo in the agenda. Originally, I had done a 30-day display limit. I thought that maybe that was after we talked a little short. So the actual resolution bumped that up to 60 days. But at the same time, we don't want banners up advertising an event six months out. And then only city staff may install and remove the banners. And because of that, there is a $250 fee to the city if you want to use those banners. It does give me the ability to waive that for certain reasons, depending on what the event is. Or maybe they don't want all of the banners, so they just want to put it at the dome. So maybe 250 isn't reasonable for that, but we don't want to have a floating scale. So that just, it gives me the authority to kind of adjust that if necessary. And then it makes the applicant responsible for the actual banner cost and design. There are some other little requirements in there, like their logo needs to be on it or who the sponsoring agency is so that everybody knows. You know, I don't want to... They need to know who's sponsoring the event or the banner. And then, of course, if it's us, then we'll just do that. But other questions?
Nope.
Such a neat idea. Okay.
How many banners are available for the...
There's 38 spots, I think.
Does that include Maggard?
Yes. Of course, the wind has reduced that some here lately. And so we're going to standards to require wind slits in the banners so that they take a little less.
Okay, anything else else?
I don't see where it says that you can, that they have to maintain them in good shape.
That's, since we put them up and take them down, we pretty much retain the authority of wind to take them down. And I'm hoping that normally 60 days, since they can only be up 60 days, my thinking is that they shouldn't be destroyed in 60 days.
If the wind is not...
Well, normally, when the wind destroys the banner, it destroys the banner pole holder too. And we've got to get involved anyway, but we can take them down if we have to, so.
We take them down, they pick them up?
Yeah.
Or we throw them away, is what I was asking.
We'll give them an opportunity to pick them up if they want them, but we're not going to hold them around.
We're not a storage agency, I was getting that.
Anything else? Entertain a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number R-007-25, adopting a policy establishing guidelines and procedures for the display of banners on city-owned streetlight poles. I'll second. Should I say the dome too?
That covers it all.
Okay, all right.
All in favor? And it passes.
And I will just add, I did do that as a resolution so that, you know, we can update the resolution at any time. So if we do run into any problems, it's real easy to update a resolution.
Okay, item 13. Consider and take appropriate action to introduce on first reading ordinance O-007-25, amending section 1.07.043 of the Code of Ordinances to update the fee schedule for the Johnson Park Youth Center.
So we talked about this during the work session, you know, with the new swimming pool opening. Our fees have been set since 2015 out at the youth center. And so with a little bit more investment in there, we talked about maybe making a slight adjustment. I know that there's been some discussion in the community about what those prices will be, and some people worried about them going to be a whole lot. It's not, you know, the council, you know, in our discussions, you know, we're still looking at trying to be reasonable. But it's been 10 years since the price has gone up and costs and everything has gone up a little bit. So what this ordinance would do is change the daily admission from $2 to $3. So that is still significantly cheaper than any other pool around. It would increase the season pass from $50 to $75, but it would add a family slash group pass rate. So if you buy three or more at one time, you can get it for $55 per person. So if you're trying to send your family out there all summer, then you pay for it upfront. We can give you a little discount. And then we also ordered a... And then we also ordered a, or adding a new weekly pass. So if you can't afford the season pass or you're going to be traveling a lot, you know, you can just do it at a week at a time and that will be $12 per person per week. So if you paid the $3 for the six days we're open, that'd be $21. So it's almost half price to do the weekly pass. So this still definitely makes it a very reasonably priced entertainment option. The fees have never, we budget about $300,000 a year for salaries for the park rec program and the swimming pool. This fee brings in $24,000. So this is still definitely a community service that we're providing. We're not making money off of it. I do not anticipate this at the rate we're going up, the $24,000 will probably turn into $30,000. So we're still not, not getting anywhere close. But I do think it is appropriate to adjust that just a little bit.
Okay. On the after hour, we will no longer rent the facility after hours?
We have not been doing that for the last three years. We were renting, there are certain exceptions, but when we were renting, renting the pool takes it away from public hours. So the pool used to be open from like one to five and then five to seven for parties. So what we do now is we keep the pool open from, it's going to be a little later because we've got, we talked about having lines, but, but it, last year was open from one to seven for the public. And then we had party packages and we had areas, you could rent an area to have a party. You just didn't get exclusive use of the pool. And so the way that they were doing is people were getting exclusive use of the pool, but then we still have to pay the lifeguards to staff it and it limited the amount that the public could use it. So on average, we were limiting two hours a day, every day, and that benefited maybe 50 parties. So we decided that it was a better community benefit to keep the pool open and accessible to everybody than limiting the rental to those hours.
Just wanted clarification.
Right. And like I said, we do still have party packages and we'll set you up in a little, in the, we've got those spaces down at the end of the community center that's got the doors onto the patio to give you access to the pool. So we'll, we'll still do that. You can bring a birthday cake. Those are, that's actually really reasonable. I mean, what, we do that for like, with food packages for under 50 bucks. And so we still get some of that, but then we also keep the pool available to the public.
You going to say anything to say? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce on first reading ordinance O-007-25, amending section 1-07-043 of the Code of Ordinances to update the fee schedule for the Johnson Park Youth Center.
Second.
All in favor? And it passes. Number 14, consider and take appropriate action to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor? And it passes. Thank you guys for coming today.
Anybody want to buy this?
Anybody want to buy Coach's steak? He's hungry.